Time for us to begin the staff meeting this morning. Appreciate you all being here. We've got some important information to cover.
Thank you.
First of all, I would like to just express our sympathy to Patricia Park and her family, if you could convey that. And my understanding is the funeral for Patricia's husband, Lee, is Thursday at Eastminster.
Okay.
Well, yeah, very kind of shocking news, but if you let us know, let her know that we sympathize with her. If there's no other comments that need to be made that preempt the business of this staff meeting, the manager will just ask you, what's up?
Commissioners, today we're going to talk about just one topic, and it's going to be about the, our response to BKD, who just completed our audit. And we had to develop our manager's response, management response to BKD's audit. And in that, we thought that this would be a great opportunity for us to talk about it. And so that's what we're going to do today. Lindsay and I will do it. I'll speak the first part, and Lindsay will kind of get a little bit more into the guts of what the auditors found and our response to that and our fix for that. So first, I want to go through my piece, and I really want to talk it from the, kind of, the beginning a little bit, just to take us back some. So during my first year as a county manager, I began to make organizational changes to better align Cedric County for future success. This realignment allowed for new managers, as you know, the new assistant county managers and the deputy county manager, the opportunity to thoroughly review the processes, policies, and budget in their areas, and ensure that all of these supported our new strategic plan. So if you remember, the organizational realignment was done concurrently with the strategic planning development, which was a unique situation for us, because it allowed me as a manager to align our strategic plan to the organizational structure. And a lot of organizations don't get to do that. But for us, since they were happening concurrently, it allowed us to do that and then put in managers with multiple functions to become basically, if you will, budget resource managers for their priority. So it's a unique situation that allows for alignment and better use of resources. So in 2016, once the organizational alignment was complete, Cedric County did a request for proposal for financial audit services. If you remember, I said in 2016, when we made the change, that the Government Finance Officer Association Standards recommend, GFOA standards, recommend government organizations change auditors every five years. With that standard in mind, and particularly in light of the fraud that occurred in 2016, status quo was not an option. Therefore, when we selected a firm to audit our 2016 financials, it was critical to me as accounting manager that we bring in a firm with fresh perspective on our financial practices, policies, and procedures. I also asked for a more robust review of the internal controls that we had asked for in the past, and this was based off the fraud, but also because of, naturally, because of the new organizational change and the new managers and their scrutiny of their departments, it was very clear that policies, procedures, internal controls needed to be looked at. BKD was selected through that process, and the audit has provided fresh insight and has revealed opportunities to improve our internal controls to best protect the assets entrusted to the county by its citizens. These vulnerabilities previously had not been identified, and now we have been given a roadmap for correcting them. In this process, there will be two critical managers responsible for making these changes. And the deputy county manager, in his role as being the priority owner for effective business operations organization, will be the one heading the policy development. Under his purview, his policy development, and also underneath him is the CFO. So between him and the CFO, those two leaders will be directly responsible for making sure that this framework gets executed. The first one, and if you read the audit, there were several themes that came out of the audit that kind of helped me develop this roadmap, this framework that I've given them to execute. The first one is, we need consistent applications of the policies and procedures across the organization. Second is, we need a need for regular and routine reconciliation of our financial accounts, capital projects, and assets, again, across the organization. We need improved internal controls and strict adherence to them. And third, or fourth, is increased communications between county divisions and departments to ensure information is accurate and timely. Fifth, additional training of personnel. Training is going to be essential, especially once we get these new policies and procedures, internal controls in place. People need to know how to use them, and they need to be consistent in using them. And it even gets to things like succession planning, that if one person is trained in it, that does not mean there needs to be, doesn't need to be multiple people trained in it, so we have redundancy in any type of function. But this training needs to be especially for fraud detection and prevention and accounts payable best practices. And then finally, we need consistent evaluation and updates of our policies and procedures. That means constant evaluation or reevaluation using the checklist, using the policies, procedures, and internal controls as a guide to make sure that we are in constant alignment across the board. Now, this is a new framework. This is, the BKD audit is exactly what I had asked for. It identified weaknesses that we need to work on, but this is a great thing, because this gives us, and the new team, including the, almost the entire finance team, from Lindsay on down, is new. It gives us the opportunity to use a roadmap to get better as an organization. So I'm very happy with the framework that we have and the direction that we're going to go. But before I conclude, I want Lindsay to kind of go through a little bit more of the guts of the audit and what was found.
So as the manager outlined, BKD did provide a number of recommendations for us based on the deficiencies or concerns that they found, particularly with regard to our internal controls. Per auditing standards, a deficiency exists when the design or operation of a control does not allow management or employees to prevent or detect and correct misstatements of the county's financial statements on a timely basis in the course of management or the employees' normal duties. They have identified a series of deficiencies, and they've sorted them into three categories based on the severity of the issue they found. The most significant type of deficiency they identified was what's called a material weakness. And a material weakness is defined as a deficiency such that there's a reasonable possibility that a material misstatement of the county's financial statements will not be prevented or detected and corrected on a timely basis. And that key word there is material misstatement, something of significance. The next category that they found were significant deficiencies. Those are less severe than a material weakness, but they're important enough that you all charged with governance need to be made aware of those. And then the final category they identified are deficiencies. It's the least severe category. It may not result in a material misstatement, but it's still a weakness in our internal controls, a risk that we need to make sure that we can address. So while the report outlines the issues in depth, I just want to highlight certain issues, particularly for the group of staff that are here, because this, some of the recommendations that BKD provided to us will have impacts on many folks in this organization. So within the material weakness category, the auditors found four material weaknesses. I just want to touch on three this morning, but everyone should have handouts that outline, at least on pages two and three, the synopsis of the findings along with the recommendations from BKD. So the first material weakness I want to talk about is with our year-end reporting process. When the auditors were here, they found that our year-end checklist that we used wasn't comprehensive enough. It didn't include everyone that was involved in that year-end process, and it wasn't complete. And so they have recommended that we put together a more comprehensive list with firm deadlines. That was another thing that the auditors found, was that there were times that exceptions were granted to deadlines in particular situations. And they have recommended that from now on, we have strict adherence to those deadlines. And that will be a big, that could be a big change potentially for some of the divisions in the organization. And so we will be working to make sure everyone's aware of what those deadlines are. Our talented accounting staff has worked with our talented ERP staff to put together what those deadlines will need to look like in order to meet all of the deadlines for our auditors. And so we will be working with divisions to make sure they understand what those expectations are, so that we can provide them with guidance and direction and help them make those deadlines. The next material weakness I want to talk about are with our agency funds. We have agency funds throughout the organization, and what the auditors found was that there had not been a regular and routine reconciliation of a number of those agency funds for quite some time in some cases. And so going forward, we will work with divisions, finance will work with divisions, to make sure they understand what a reconciliation ought to look like to best comply with best practices and accounting standards, so that we're all doing it uniformly and consistently across the organization. Finance likewise, for those accounts that we are responsible for, are, we are doing more frequent and more intense reconciliations than we would have in the past. And throughout the report, you'll see references to monthly and quarterly reconciliations in our responses, because that is a common theme, as Mike said. The next material weakness I want to talk on, and the last one I want to talk about and address, is the vendor fraud. As we all know, the county was a victim of a fraud loss back last fall, $566,000. As a result of that fraud, we began a review of our internal controls even before the audit started, and made a number of changes to the way we collect vendor information, the way we manage vendor information. The vulnerability working group was a group of staff across the organization that got together and made some recommendations for some risks we identified on the website. And so those have been addressed to try and balance transparency with identified security risks we thought we found. So those are the material weaknesses. Again, there were four total. Those are the three I want to talk about today, though. The next category, again, are significant deficiencies. There are six that were identified by BKD through the process. I just want to talk about two today. The first is grant administration. BKD and their review of our audit, or their review of our internal controls, found that we don't have adequate grant tracking and year-end processes in place. You might recall that grant administration is done throughout the organization. Reporting is done by various parties, and we lack some consistency in how we do that. Going forward, we want to make sure that we are doing that consistently. We want to make sure that information finance is receiving is accurate and timely, so that what's coming out of finance is as accurate as it can be. We're also doing that type of review on a quarterly basis to ensure that we don't have revenues that are misposted to a certain revenue account, a certain description. We want to make sure that that's right, right from the get-go, so we're not caught up in that at the year-end, trying to get all of that sorted through. The next significant deficiency I want to talk about was with purchasing. I think it's important to note here that with purchasing, 2016 activity, which is what the financial audit was done on, was all done under Charter 65, the old purchasing charter. We have Charter 68 now, that you all approved earlier this year and went into effect in April, and that's a more robust procurement and contracting policy that has some teeth in it, so that we are able to make sure that there are ways we can enforce that policy, if it's applicable, in the particular instance we're talking about, so that will help us going forward. But the ultimate outcome of that purchasing significant deficiency was that we have a lack of communication where we need it between finance and divisions. And we are working to improve that. One of the items that they particularly talked about was some Public Works capital projects, and we now have a process in place where we are seeking information from Public Works and putting it in a report to you that you see every quarter. And it talks about when estimated completion dates will be, so that we're able to make sure that we're tracking all of those things and communicating that to you all as well. Again, there were six significant deficiencies. I just wanted to talk about those two for this group. The final category, we want to talk about our deficiencies. Again, these are the least significant issues that the auditors will find. The one I want to talk about today, though there were four total listed in the report, relates to purchasing cards. Through the review of our data, the auditors found that we had 489 total purchasing cards or travel cards throughout the organization. And while they found that many of the cards aren't used or used infrequently, there's still a lot of opportunity for spending by those folks with that, with their amount of spending limit. And that's also opportunity potentially to go around the purchasing policy. So this is one of our highest priority orders of business and finance, to craft a revised purchasing card policy. We have one in place now. We want to tweak that, so that we are making sure that the right people have access to the right type of card, whether it be a P card, a purchasing card in their name, or a travel card that's generally assigned to a division. We also, or BKD recommended to us that we get what's called Level 3, which is really detailed transaction level data in finance for all P cards, and review that routinely to make sure that there are no irregular transactions, or if there are, to dig into that. And so that has already occurred. Another recommendation from BKD was that we have some more intense supervisor review of those P card reconciliations before they're approved to be paid. And so we'll be working that into the policy and also working with division heads and managers to make sure they understand what it is that they're looking for, how those cards may be used, to ensure that we don't have any of those issues going forward. And we will review that policy and coordinate with our stakeholders pretty soon. So as the report outlines, there are a number of recommendations that we haven't discussed today, but all issues outlined in that report are being addressed in some form. And so I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. If not, I'll turn it back over to Mike.
So I, one question that you can, I think it's important to note, you know, based off of, you know, we presented the CAFR a couple of weeks ago, so it's important to note that the audit found that we really had a clean and unmodified opinion of our financial statements. So yes, there are things that we need to work on, but do you want to explain that a little bit more, or any better?
Absolutely. So essentially, and Rick explained, I think, a little bit of this when he was at the podium, but the auditors told us that the financial statements that we presented to you for 2016 were essentially free from any material defect based on the reviews that they did. These internal controls that they have identified are areas of risk going forward, but they don't believe it impacted our 2016 financials. They're just ways for us to improve going forward to make sure that something like that doesn't happen.
All right. So for me, as a manager, you obviously can't make things better until you know what needs to be changed. And in this case, we, again, clearly have a roadmap on how we need to move forward. And this document clearly serves as a blueprint for success for the financial operations in the organization, particularly in the Division of Finance. But it lays the groundwork for implementing changes, best practices, and industry standards as we work to address the material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, and deficiencies found in the document. I would like to also say that this isn't a specific department. This just doesn't, you know, although I mentioned the finance department, this is clearly across the organization. It affects every elected's office, every department, every division, and we clearly need a team effort to make these changes as we work towards the future. We'll do this as a team. We'll do this in working groups, bringing everybody around the table. We'll look for solutions. We won't dictate solutions, but we need assistance. And a decision in the end has to be made on how to go forward. So I just ask everybody to work as a team to help us in this, as we start implementing these changes and make the organization even better than it is today. So with that, I'll just stand for any questions.
Richard?
So I'd like to have something to keep us up to date on these deficiencies and when they're fixed or when they're estimated. I mean, I don't want, you know, a spreadsheet, a matrix, or something. I know some of these have been addressed. I think we should either say completed, or whatever, and so that, I mean, we've got, you know, four material weaknesses, six significant deficiencies, and, you know, as long as I've been here, we never had material or significant deficiencies. And as a commissioner, I want to have visit those and make sure when those get addressed. And so, and let me say, I know this, you know, it's not the best report, but this is why we did what we did when we changed auditors. And I know we took some heat over that, and there was a little controversy, but I think it was all overdue, and it's good business practice to do this and getting different eyes. That's why you do it. And it's painful, but you do it, and you improve, and then you move on. So I appreciate all the work of everybody that went through to get this done, and all the work that's going to be done in the future to solve all these things.
And I think it's important to note, too, that when we did change auditors, if you remember, we asked in the RFP to do a more, BKD to do a more detailed dive into our policies, procedures, and internal controls. And that certainly bear fruit and is why we got the report that we got.
David?
Okay. Well, I appreciate you briefing us today in front of the staff and everyone. I know each of the commissioners were individually briefed by BD.
BKD.
And also with the response, the management response, each commissioner was briefed on the management response. But when I was briefed the other day by the manager and Lindsay on the management responses, granted, there are some things in there that we could do better, but the thing that I really wanted to make sure that got out was that this is really good news. We've identified some things. We want to make sure that transparency, that we provide this so that everyone can see exactly where we're at. That was the whole purpose of this audit. That was the purpose of having BKD do this audit. And really, as I said a minute ago, this is, this is good news. We've identified some things that we can do better. But overall, our organization is strong, and our financial situation is strong. And where we're at right now is, as you said, we've got a pathway that we can follow to do even better. So I am very glad that we presented this in front of the staff and in front of the press, so that they can see that we are being transparent, we are doing a good job, and we do care on how that we husband the resources of our citizens.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, Jim, Michael, I'll leave it there.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to just say, I really appreciate the staff and the process. I'm extremely impressed. Previous audits, I've seen, they looked very similar to the previous to that, and I always wondered, how deep are they looking? And I wasn't quite sure. But this one here, I have a lot of confidence. We've really looked hard and deep, and it makes me feel like we're doing a great job. And I know this wasn't even easy on anybody. The staff has to be open to changing their ways a little bit. And this is good for the county, and I agree with Commissioner Dennis. This is good news. You know, you don't know what you don't know until you take a good, good hard look at that, and you find out what you don't know, and you've got a response. So I just want to say, I really appreciate the fact that we've gone through this process, and we have some things, we now, we now know where our weaknesses are and what needs to be fixed. And I know we will fix all those things. I have a lot of confidence in that. And I just want to say, I really appreciate everyone bringing this to this point. I think this is tremendously good news. Thank you.
Anything else? Well, I echo the comments that have already been made. I mean, you know, it was clearly, clearly time for a fresh look. We've had a fresh look, found some ways to do better. And I appreciate the fact that our staff's all willing and eager to accept the findings and go forward with an improved process. The question is, will instituting some of these processes require more staff? I mean, we're going to have to add people to help us keep track of all this, or?
You okay with me answering that question? We believe yes. We believe that in order to develop the processes, policies, and procedures that we'll need to actually execute and implement these across the organization, all 42 of our divisions, along with working with stakeholders to understand what their needs are, we will need some, we think, internal financial auditor support to help us not just audit folks, but to develop those policies and procedures, to help train and coach folks in how to execute those best practices, and then to make sure that we're adhering to that consistently across the organization. And so you'll hear more about that in the recommended budget tomorrow.
Okay, good. Well, we need to invest in what it takes to make, I mean, if we don't invest to make this successful, then we wasted our time here. So I would have been surprised if you said, oh, no, everything's fine. We'll just do it. So I think we, all the commissioners want us to be, get an A-plus rating on how we handle all this, and we also would like to do everything we can to make sure that, very unusual event that happened last fall doesn't happen again. And so all this kind of works together to help make us stronger and better. So appreciate your willingness to say we're going to do it, so.
That's all I have.
Okay. Any other comments on the audit? All right. Well, Lindsay, thank you. Commissioners, other items we need to discuss at this time? Richard, do you want to bring anything up?
Well, I guess JRVR, we got the email yesterday that that facility is going to be taken out of the encumbrance by the state, and no longer can be held hostage by the federal government, I guess, so that at least tear down that little block. So I don't know if that will change the timeline or decision process this Wednesday, because I know that was a significant issue. So I'm happy, at least we got that. Ultimately, I'd like to get the whole Lake Appton released from this encumbrance, because it's only $7,100, and I think, this is crazy. I think everyone knows my fee is about strings being attached by federal grants. Nevertheless, this is a small, not small, but a significant degree, and we still want to continue to fight the fight with respect to the entirety of that. I don't know, but...
Well, do you want to be a little more specific? Probably most of the staff doesn't know that that JRVR area is released from the whole encumbrance now.
Yeah. What the state is saying is, in the original document, it said that if it was a school, what did it say?
School, school and buildings.
Something like this. Anyway, they're basically saying it probably should, it should have never been included in the original boundaries of the grant program to begin with. And so they're going to do the paperwork to release it from part of Lake Appton that has cumbered because of that grant money that we received years ago, which will free us up to do whatever we want to with that 20-some acres. We could still tear it down. We could, you know, build a Taj Mahal on it, whatever. I mean, we could do whatever we wanted. So that's a significant change from previously, so. But the rest of Lake Appton, over 600 acres, is still encumbered. Once again, for $7,100 we received 50 years ago.
Well, I want to just...
I have asked, Congressman Estes and some others, to look at legislative, long-term legislative, legislative solutions that allow anyone who's participated in this program to return the money or put a timeline. In perpetuity is a long time, okay? In perpetuity. I mean, so, and there's, you know, different things that you can do to see if they can do that. And the current administration, I think, we've got as good a chance as you'll ever have of getting things like that amended to make it more fun to do. Because we basically gave up local control of that entire facility if we want to build it in. anything on it or change anything. And so we've got to now give permission, so. And it's not just us. And it's not just Lake Appton because we have encumbrances on other parts of here in the county and, you know, it would help everybody nationwide, so. But that could be, that'll be a longer process.
Well, hopefully they will not stop their thinking or their efforts just because we got one little piece taken out, but they'll continue on the rest of the property that's to remove the whole restrictions.
Right. Right. The JRBR was kind of like time issue if we're going to, you know, we may still proceed to do the same thing. But that was a time issue, but I still don't want them to think that we're done here, at least our likely officials, our congressmen and senators, that the overall issue is that it's just one part of the problem.
Well, I think we need to thank Commissioner Ramsaw for his persistence in this. I mean, he's stuck with it and stuck with it and now we've got at least, at least part of a good outcome. Hopefully we'll get the rest of the outcome, but just tenacity, perseverance. Way to go, Richard. I mean, that's, that was a good job.
Hey, hey. Daniel, write that down. Watch that on the front page.
Well, we won't crown you until the rest of the problem's solved. All right.
All right. You better get that crown ready.
Anything else? David?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Michael?
Yep. Jim? I only have to say, on his previous comments, is I don't know if that changes anything tomorrow, but we do have a bid board tomorrow, an opportunity to consider action on that facility out there. But in my mind, I guess this changes the equation a little bit and it does. I mean, I, I didn't, to adhere to that personally, that was the only option left on the table. That was the only option left on the table. And I think right now that helps, turns out, at least another option potentially to, I guess, reconsider other things. And so to me, that does change the situation just a little bit. I don't know if that changes our agenda tomorrow in any way, but I think the bid board didn't have that decent information last Thursday when they met. And I wonder if we've got to maybe just pick a just the agenda. I don't know if that makes sense or not, but to me, I just, I just need to ask the question, I guess.
Well, we can, you know, we can make those comments, make changes tomorrow when that agenda item comes up. Talk about it and do as the majority of the commission decides. David?
I'm sorry. I do have one other subject separate from that. You all know that we had an en banc meeting on the 28th of June. We did send a copy of changes to the contract across the street. They do have them. I got an email from Councilman Frye this morning and he said it will not be on their agenda tomorrow. It's going to be on a week from tomorrow. I believe it's on our agenda for, actually their agenda for today. I believe it's on our agenda for tomorrow, but we'll have to remove that as we get to it. But I appreciate all the staff work that was done, especially from legal and the rest of the staff and EMS, for all the work that they did on that EMS contract. I do see that, I think that it's going to pass across the street. It looks very good there and I think it'll pass on this side of the street. So I just want to let everyone know that if they take a look at the agenda, it's not going to be on ours tomorrow and it's not on City of Wichita today. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay. Anything else? Commissioners? Okay. Anything else from district county managers? Counselor? Anyone else from the table? All right. Any of our electeds? Hi, Sheriff Easter, how you doing?
Good.
How are you doing? I'm doing well. Good. Nice to see you today. Anything else? Anyone? Beside Pleasant Trees? All right. All right. If we've got nothing else to talk about, then let's go back to work.